I'm recording members present and absent.
Hanson.
Present.
Kane.
Present.
McDermott.
Present.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Here.
Number two, open meeting compliance statement read.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of the regular meeting was filed in the Woods County Clerk's Office in Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, including Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, and place of the agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view with the location of the meeting.
And some agenda. All following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Addition of new, of items of new business to the agenda?
There are none.
Minutes of the September third regular board meeting and the September sixteenth to two thousand and nineteen board meeting, approval of the finance report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund account transfer, approval of child nutrition, and declare the following items as surplus minutes.
Okay, three point two are minutes from the September third regular board meeting and the September sixteenth special board meeting. I did not see any errors. Three point three, our findings report. I have Mr. Feely's call goes up there. It might be a little bit easier to see on the projector. Just want to point out to you, these are collections so far through September. You can see obviously the biggest, or our greatest source of revenue has been gross production throughout the years, and you can see that it is down two hundred and twenty-seven thousand as compared to last September. So that's something that we can, need to continue to monitor. I've also put a couple of other attachments on there that are revenue and expense comparisons. So if you'll go to the next page for me, this is just kind of a revenue and expense comparison with FY twenty to FY nineteen. It's really pretty similar if you compare both of those. Probably one of the, we've spent more this September than we did last. Part of that's going to be the expense of activity buses and so on, but for the most part, it is held true. What I want to point out to you though is that we continue to, it looks like the trend is that we don't collect a whole lot from our ad valorem until we get to the months of December and January. And so we hope those collections continue to be good for the district. Any questions about finance report? Okay, if you look at three point four, the activity fund report, you have two pages of that. Just a couple to point out to you. FFA nine fourteen, you will see some receipts into that account. That account has grown from the blue and gold sausage sale that they have had over the last couple of weeks. And then AMS vocal, and, or it'd be middle school vocal, and that would be number nine fifty-nine. You can see that that activity count has grown also, and that is from cookie dough sales. Three point five, the activity fund interaccount transfer. We have an interaccount transfer, and this is from the football to the track activity account, one thousand four hundred sixty-five, and this is from the gold card fundraiser that they did. Both those programs work together, and then the track team takes a portion of that to help them with their expenses and fees during track season. Three point six is the child nutrition report. Little bit different information to give to you from that. If you will look up here, I attached this, and this will also be in that budget book. Each month, this is how we go through and we track our revenue and expenditures in our child nutrition fund. And if you look at column F, and if you'll scroll down there towards the bottom, well, you actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Feely, if you'll look right there, you can see that our comparison there in September with our payroll is quite a bit more than it was as compared to last year. And that's part of moving those salaries of our cooks into child nutrition fund to protect some more of our general fund as we begin to do projects out of our building. So it's just a matter of moving some of those salaries to different funds. And so then if you'll scroll on down there to the bottom, then it gives you a comparison of our total expense budget between this year and last year, between those two columns, nineteen twenty and eighteen nineteen. Okay? I will tell you that, I'm just reading these numbers off for you. Next month, I'll try to get these on a sheet or attachment. In nineteen twenty, we've served over five thousand breakfasts, and that, and as compared to last year, it's, it's almost equal. As far as lunches, over thirteen thousand lunches thus far this year, and it was right around twelve thousand nine hundred last year, so pretty comparable year to year. Three point seven, items of surplus, a couple of pages of attachments with surplus items. Those are some older computers at the high school that are going to be surplused, and then there is a window unit that was replaced in the high school cafeteria, window AC unit that was replaced and will also be surplused. Have any questions about the consent agenda? If there are none, I would recommend it's approval.
I would make the motion that we accept three point two to three point seven as presented.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Vote to approve purchase order encumbrances to the following funds for fiscal year twenty. Four point one, general fund as referenced. Four point two, building fund as referenced. Four point three, child nutrition fund as referenced, and four point four, gift fund as referenced.
Okay, we'll start with our general fund, number eleven, and I'll go through a couple of those purchase orders there for you. Purchase order number three forty-eight, three thousand five hundred. Washington had to replace their intercom system. They looked at fixing that intercom system, but that is such an old antiquated system that they went in and replaced that with index, and it, that intercom system now works with our portable buildings and so on and so forth. So that's purchase order number three forty-eight. Purchase order number two forty-eight, Bank Central, two thousand eight hundred twenty-three oh nine. That was adding some cameras to the outside of our indoor facility for security. We don't have the correct attachment. We've got, we've got some salaries plus, go back to the, to the.
It's not there at all.
Oh, okay.
I can load it.
Could you please?
Yeah, I'll take this one.
Or just make it stop.
And it might be. Well, yeah.
Whatever's best.
Okay.
Can we move on to, first day of order?
Can we move on to the?
Is it just channels on the building?
Yes.
Did you have to?
Yes, payroll's on there.
Building fund does have.
So, yeah, there should be nothing in building fund. Child nutrition fund, we just have one expense. Brannan's Comfort, that was a repair to a freezer in the middle school cafeteria. And I'll go ahead and just run through these, some of these purchase orders, and you all can look at those, and of course, if you have any questions, feel free to come back and ask those. Purchase order number three fifty-two, three thousand dollars. This was a C cold that had developed over at Longfellow by one of the big toys, and so they went in and did some dirt work, looked at replacing some of the sidewalk and concrete there, and so that is for that repair work. Purchase order number three fifty-five, three thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. That's with McGraw Hill. Those were some textbooks that were used. So if you remember, we had some increased enrollment in our kindergarten classes, and we adjusted that and had to add an extra kindergarten class. And so those textbooks, purchase order number three fifty-five, that was to supplement that additional classroom. Purchase order number three fifty-nine, TFS results. That was for our speaker last week, Mark Turner. A lot of really good feedback. Talked about time in careers and college with our staff, and we've received really good feedback from all staff on that evening. Purchase order number three sixty-one, Grey Dog Mechanical, that's an open purchase order for some district repairs. Purchase order number three seventy-six, four thousand seven hundred fifty-seven, Learning A to Z. Learning A to Z is a reading software program. We use that from, I believe it's pre-K all the way through eighth grade, with all students are able to access that. Purchase order number three eighty-three, six thousand five hundred ninety-two. We needed some new MacBooks for our speech and debate program. We had ordered some last year. Speech and debate, they cannot use, they need storage on their, they need more storage on their hard drive and couldn't use Chromebooks to do that. So when they go and compete, they have to store that information, all their research and, and all they need when they go compete, has to be on that computer. So that is to help that speech and debate program. Purchase order number four oh two, Western Equipment. That is to repair some mowers and the skid steer. Want to take a second to thank Dustin Moffett for the job he's doing with our lawns. They've looked great. He stayed on top of it even with all the rain. If you look at the payroll, the next attachment to that, those are all substitute pay or bus driving pay from general fund payroll. And then from four point two, building fund, we had no expenses taken out of the building fund. Four point three, child nutrition, Brannan's Comfort, the repeat, the repair to the freezer, Brannan's Comfort, and then nothing out of the gift fund. There any questions about four one, four two, four three, four four? There are none, I would recommend they're approval.
Make the motion, we approve that purchase order encumbrances as referenced in four point one, four point two, and four point three.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
I would like to introduce tonight Dr. Kay Decker and Ms. Gina Denton. They were both on our resources committee with the strategic plan. I was fortunate enough to get to work with both of them closely through this process, and they're going to share just a little bit about where we're at in that goal area, and so I will turn it over to them.
The first thing is, we're going to talk about is the major items that have been implemented during the last quarter for the resource committee. There's been a prioritization of facility improvement projects by the facility committee, establishment of technology and transportation committee, and a communication plan by administrators to community and board.
And item two, what items were successfully implemented per the strategic planning timeline? The first action step included identifying by the facilities committee, projects and improvement areas, and this included the art room, locker room, and public restrooms at the high school, the heating and ventilation and cooling systems in the gym at the high school, the track and field area at the high school, parking, and this is Mr. Argo, correct me if I'm wrong, and the north parking lot.
That's correct.
At the high school, and then improvements at the ag farm to improve drainage, and then also to make some improvements with the softball field at Crenshaw and the Crenshaw Field concession renovation plan. The technology committee has been established. It is being chaired by the IT Director, Mrs. Boziden. The committee will be meeting more in depth this following winter to review the district's technology plan, perform an assessment of technology and infrastructure across the district, assess the number of software programs currently being used in the district, and then we also have a transportation committee that's chaired by the Transportation Director, Mr. Ellis. That's been established, and this committee will also meet further this following winter to plan for the following transportation safety issues, and then a five-year transportation rotation renewal plan for district vehicles.
The next action step was to provide some professional development to the board on this five-year strategic plan. This has been done with the communication plan at the monthly board meetings. Principals are also holding forums on the rotation each month to detail the action steps that have been completed so far with the plan, and the superintendent radio show has also been used to discuss the new programs and communicate also the progress of the strategic plan.
The next action step is to provide monthly updates on expenditures related to the strategic plan, goal areas and objectives, and each month when reviewing purchase orders to the board, the superintendent will continue to communicate to the board expenditures that relate specifically to the strategic plan.
The next action step is to develop an annual budget aligned to the strategic plan goal, the areas, objectives, that includes resources needed. Mr. Argo has asked principals to review purchase orders before signing to ensure that they align with the objectives and goals of the strategic plan. This action step is ongoing as we keep going through the plan. It will be important when looking at action steps such as online academy or maybe an after-school program, which are or going to be investigated in the coming months, how these action steps could be funded, and also if we continue to see a decrease in our estimation of needs, it's going to be important to look at alternate funding, maybe like from grants or other methods to fund these programs.
Item three, what items were not successfully implemented per the strategic planning timeline? And the action step included a full assessment of all physical plant buildings across the district to evaluate those facilities. All sites are currently working to assess those buildings. The district had to wait for a little while on the Oklahoma State Board of Education to get the assessment tool completed, but that's been done. And all sites have gone about the process of forming committees to do the assessment of each physical plant, and the building assessment tool is a standard tool that's used statewide, so it's going to allow the district to really, I think, compare apples to apples and make sure that, that decisions are made based on what's good for a four-year-old may not be the best for a fifteen-year-old, so anyway.
And then, at this point, there's not been really any roadblocks for successful implementation of this. Lots of times, there's different entities that have to work together, so kind of depending on like schedules and being able to coordinate, but, and then also being able to work with the arch tech, sometimes that can be a process to go through.
Any questions?
Yeah, do you all have any questions for Dr. Decker or Ms. Denton?
You might, you might share, each of you, just going through this, going through this process, what do you hope to see, or what are the outcomes? You both have been in this community, taught in this district for a long time. What are some things, some things that you're seeing different now, and what do you hope to see in the future?
Well, I thought it was really interesting to see how many different viewpoints there were there from all the different areas that people were coming to the strategic plan, but yet every one of those viewpoints, when we actually sat down and started talking, all had the same focus, really before we even started this. And then once we started it, it was just amazing how just one conversation led to another, led to another, and how all of this goes together, and even though it's over five years, how it's going to be able to be accomplished, because it has been done so very well. There's not so much at the very start, you know, it's going to be easy, I think, to implement because each year, you know, it's broken down, and so it's not like there's everything you have to do in the first year, and then the rest of the years, there's just a couple of things. And so I think just talking from, as the viewpoint from a school employee, that is like, oh my gosh, you know, we can, we can do this. It's not so much at one time. It's going to be really successful. But like I said, my biggest thing was just all the different viewpoints, how everyone still has the same goal for all the schools.
My perspective as a taxpayer, a grandparent of three kids in the Alva School District, I appreciate the commitment level of staff, faculty, administration to engage in this comprehensive planning process. I think for any school district to embrace the future needs of learning and the public and fulfill those accountability expectations, you have to have a plan in place, and this is comprehensive, but at the same time, it's not so overwhelming, at least it doesn't appear to be. It's doable and sets the stage for a continuous plan of improvement. Once you, once we finish this, you should continue. So I appreciate the district doing this a lot.
Well, on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank you, because I know it was a lot of time out of your classroom and away from your business and your classroom. It's a huge investment, but it's all for the best, what's good for our kids, and that's, we appreciate your time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. You can stay or.
Yeah.
Then.
I have to go to the library thing.
Okay. I think I have to go help her with her break.
Now, now, Miss Denton.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
One resignation from Starlet James. She will be resigning us and taking on another opportunity in communities, so we appreciate Starlet and her time here with Alva Public Schools.
Any communications?
Just want to remind you all about the region two meeting. I believe that is next week. Is that right?
Two weeks, October twenty-fourth.
October twenty-fourth, okay, a couple of weeks. If you will let us know by Friday if you plan to attend that, so we can get everyone registered that wants to be there. And that's all I have, Gina.
Where is it located?
Freedom.
Freedom High School. Items of current business, six point one. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a resolution for the Oklahoma State Department of Education of Alva Public Schools, intent to use hours rather than days for the nineteen twenty school year.
This is an agenda item that we've had for the last few years, and this just allows us the flexibility to adjust our days for inclement weather, and so I would recommend
So moved.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Six point two, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the Alva School District's budget for fiscal year twenty.
So each of you should have a budget vote that has been put together. Thank Ms. Olin for her help, Ms. Durkey, Ms. Nettles have all played a part in putting this together, and obviously won't take the time to read through thirty-nine pages of it, but want to briefly go through a few things with you. Really, it's informational, if anything, for myself and for those that are interested. But if you will look over to page twenty, well, actually, I guess it'd be page fourteen, you can see on page fourteen, these are the general fund appropriations that we received from Carroll and Associates. And what I've done is gone through for those functions and given an example and a description for each one of those function codes. And so if you turn the page, continue on over to page twenty, that is actually what you approve are the appropriations by function. So you can go back through and you can look at those function numbers, and then go back and see what those functions mean, what they stand for. Want to remind you that just because we have that money encumbered or appropriated does not necessarily mean that's what we'll spend, but it's what we legally can. And so you can go on through this booklet in that same manner. I've also included revenue and expense projections for each fund. That is how I track them on a monthly basis on twenty-four and twenty-five, and actually, I guess it goes through twenty-six. There are some revenue and expense projections for the general fund. And then on page twenty-nine, there's the building fund appropriations. Again, these are function numbers that have been appropriated, and you can see that there is an example and a definition for each one of those. And then again, on page thirty, that is what you approve as a board, this mass printout spreadsheet. So again, it's just giving you an idea of what each one of those function numbers stand for. And so we could go on through this booklet, and it's for each fund. Our child nutrition and our gift fund are also need approval by this board. Do you have any questions?
Not a question, but a comment. I know this takes a lot of time to put together, but I think this is one of the most useful things that I have seen as far as the finances with definition, and then the comparison from year to year, you know, it really gives us a better understanding, I think. So I appreciate it. I know it takes a lot of time.
Thank you.
Very appreciative.
Thank the ladies down in the office, have a lot to do with it. If there are no other questions, I would recommend that we approve the Alva School District budget for FY twenty.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Discussion, six point three, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an out-of-state travel request for Coach Ball and the Alva High School baseball team to attend an invitational tournament in Phoenix, Arizona, March fourteenth through the twentieth.
So Coach Ball has worked with Mr. Potter and Mr. Horner, Athletic Director, on this, and worked with closely with them, and so we feel like this will be another opportunity of like we send our electric gold, and baseball has gone in the past, and many of our other organizations out of state to be able to participate in activities. This be another good example of this, and I would recommend to the board that we approve this out-of-state travel request.
I would make that motion to approve. Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Six point four, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the revised extra duty assignments.
There are three revisions to our extra duty assignments, and they were oversights, really, all three of them on my part. Cody Hooper's been our baseball coach the last few years, and we, we, I did not catch that, and so he has been added to the extra duty assignment list, and then Ty Hooper will be the middle school baseball assistant with him. And then we also have added Candy Omgren. Candy will be a mentor teacher as for to care abroad as she begins her new position as the Alva High School librarian. Are any questions about the revised extra duty assignment?
Make a motion, we approve the revised extra duty assignments as referenced in six point four.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.5, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the Alva School District Gifted Educational Plan for the 2019-20 school year.
Ms. Martini has had some training this evening and then we've also got a middle school football game. And so she has sent me some notes from the District Gifted and Talented Committee meeting. And so if you'll remember, this was a big component of our strategic plan was to take a look at our Gifted and Talented Program and how we do that, how we identify students, and really the nuts and bolts of the program and are we meeting our kids' needs? And so that committee is formed. They have begun looking at, I will tell you, the Chair of that committee is Casey Adair, Vice Chairman Melanie Gassford, and Minutes Clerk is J.C. Heaton. They are looking at different options to test. In the past, we've given the Otis Lennon School Ability Test to identify students. And they're looking at continuing that, but also looking at our newer map data to qualify students for our Gifted and Talented Program. The committee is also, at this time, we have nomination forms that help qualify students. And that committee is going to be reviewing those forms and seeing if those forms are accurate, if they're appropriate when we're identifying our students. And so I want to thank that committee. Thank Ms. Martini for doing the work on this. There's a lot of steps in the winter and spring for this committee with the strategic plan. They have a lot out in front of them to accomplish. And so I appreciate them taking this on and beginning to look at this plan. And I would recommend its approval.
Make a motion, we approve the Gifted Education Plan as referenced in 6.5.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.6, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the following staff members to District Teacher Residency Committee for the 2019-20 school year. Kay Christensen, Crystal Clapp, Sarah Eckhart, Kylie Feely, Tiffany Motta, Candy Wooten, Kelly Woods, Don Self-Hill, Andy Almgren, and Tim Argo.
This is a committee that's required by accreditation to be formed. And each one of these teachers is a mentor teacher in our district. And so we have a mentor process that we have a checklist that these teachers meet with our newer teachers to the district and they walk each month. They walk through different expectations, whether it's getting ready for parent teacher conference, turning in grades, so on and so forth. And so this committee is going to be formed and although it's requirement, one of the things that we're going to do and I'm going to work with them is how are we meeting the needs of our new teachers in that mentor check sheet that we've used? It's about three or four years old. We need to review it, make sure it's still meeting the needs of the district. So that's kind of the task that this committee has and I would recommend its approval.
So moved.
Second.
I have a quick question.
You bet.
That's okay. That's all right. Is there, have, did we propose some compensation for our teaching?
Yes. Every teacher, the compensation is on our extra duty assignment list, I believe.
I thought so.
350 as well.
I think that's right.
Okay. So I thought so.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.7, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve a statutory waiver allowing the Alva School District to serve, to service fewer than 10 alternative education students without participating in a cooperative agreement with another district.
Again, this is a requirement through the state because we are serving less than 10 at this point in time in accreditation that we have this statutory waiver approved by the board. So the number fluctuates in alternative education. So we expect we will have more than 10, but at this point in time in October 1, as we begin our accreditation count, we are below 10. And so that's the reason for this requirement.
I make the motion that we approve 6.7.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.